Counselor Chamber.
3:00 P.M. 4:00 P.M. I said 10:00 P.M.
No, I said 4:10 P.M.
Oh, 4:10.
Okay. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I think we haven't heard from you for a while, Dr. Edwana. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And we have a presentation today by Department of ADEQ. If you'd like to take a podium and maybe enlighten us a little bit here today.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for the opportunity to come speak today. My name is Misael Cabrera, and I am the Director of the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. If you will forgive me, I'm a little bit hoarse. I've been doing a lot of talking lately, and I'm also suffering from allergies, so if for some reason you can't hear me, just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cabrera, and welcome. Thank you.
So today I want to talk a little bit about the Santa Cruz River and the International Outfall Interceptor. As many of us in the room know that the International Outfall Interceptor collects wastewater from Nogales, Mexico, and then flows come across the border. Those flows from Mexico, which are about 90 percent of the flow, or a little bit more, are joined from flows from Nogales and Rio Rico, and those flows end up in the Nogales International Water Treatment Plant, where the wastewater is treated and then discharged as affluent into the Santa Cruz River. It's actually quite a bit of water that we get from Mexico. It's about 12 million gallons per day, or 13,442 acre-feet per year. And what you'll notice is that, once the water's been cleaned, I refer to it as water and not as wastewater, because that water has value to it. In fact, one of the things that I like to point out is that, in terms of the Santa Cruz Active Management Area, and so an active management area is an area where groundwater has to be managed, and it has to be managed so that it's not depleted. And so one of the areas that is managed that way is the Santa Cruz Basin. And so in the Santa Cruz Active Management Area, there is a certain demand, and these numbers come from the Santa Cruz AMA budget. And so in terms of demand for groundwater in Santa Cruz County, there's about 15,000 acre-feet per year of riparian demand. There's about 12,000 acre-feet per year of agricultural demand, about 1,400 acre-feet per year of industrial demand, and in terms of municipal demand, it's about 6,800 acre-feet per year. So that is the demand on the groundwater resources in Santa Cruz County. But those resources, if we're assuming sustainable yield, those resources rely heavily on the water that's delivered by the International Outfall Interceptor through the Nogales International Water Treatment Plant and then is discharged into the Santa Cruz. So what happens is that water's not only flowing through the Santa Cruz River, it's actually infiltrating and replenishing the groundwater resource in the active management area. And so if we assume sustainable yield, in other words, if we assume that the demand and the supply is balanced, which is something we're always trying to do with groundwater, so that we don't run out, the water that we get from Mexico is about 38 percent of sustainable yield for the Santa Cruz AMA. Okay? Here's what that means, is that if that water were not available to be poured into the Santa Cruz River and recharged into the groundwater aquifer, then that groundwater aquifer would not be sustainable.
Do one question. Now, you're referring to the water after the treatment plant.
That's correct.
It doesn't affect the city of Nogales so much as it does after it goes into the Santa Cruz River?
So let me, that's a very good point. Let me show another figure here. Yeah, here we go. So it's, and it's a very good question, Mayor Doyle. So that water is discharged here at the Nogales International Water Treatment Plant, which is roughly nine miles northwest of, or north of Nogales, Arizona. So much of that benefit of that recharged water happens north of Nogales. So in the areas of Rio Rico, Atumacoacree-Carman, Tubac, Chavez-Siding, all the way up to Amado. And this is why I've given this presentation to the Santa Cruz Valley Citizens Forum, and I've given the same presentation to the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors.
And the board authority.
And the board authority.
On the scam, excuse me, Mayor? On the scam of the Santa Cruz Active Management? We used to have a director, and I think it used to be Mr. Bartzner's over there, and then when the funding in 2008, 2009 came, the recession, they did away with that office here in Nogales that we used to oversee the water and everything. Is that ever going to come back in the place here?
So what I know, sir, is that there is a manager for the Santa Cruz Active Management Area. His name is Jeff Tandler. And he actually had me give this same presentation to the Santa Cruz Groundwater Users Association. So that's another presentation that I did. And so he manages that from the Phoenix office, but he's the one entrusted with management of the Santa Cruz AMA.
If you could just let us know in the future what is the potential of us having control of it here in Santa Cruz County? We had our own person down here with meetings here where we were updated, at least on a monthly basis, of what is happening. He might be in Phoenix, but we never get these updates. We didn't have this committee or anything there. It would be nice that we have some control over that, though, too.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I will make sure I deliver that message to the Department of Water Resources that is in charge of that, so I will make sure to deliver that message to them.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So again, there is a lot of benefit to that water, and I'm actually going to talk about it quite a bit, the benefits of that water, but it is correct, the benefits occur north of the city of Nogales in Santa Cruz County. So again, it's very important for sustainable yield in the groundwater basin. What's also important to understand is that there is the perennial extent of the Santa Cruz River. In other words, the extent of the river that you can see has water all the time. That's the perennial extent. If that water from Mexico would be missing, the perennial extent would go from 18 miles down to about 6.3 miles. And this has been studied by the USGS and other scholars, as written up in various journals. So in the picture, we see an explanation of what a perennial extent looks like and what it could look like if we were to lose that water. It's important to understand that the perennial extent is not just about being able to see water. It's not just about being able to recharge water for our groundwater aquifers. It's really also about protecting critical habitat for endangered species. So there's two endangered species in the area, the southwest willow flycatcher and the Gila top minnow, which right now are doing actually quite well. They're thriving after some upgrades happen at the treatment plant, cleaning up the water. But if that water were to be missing, and the water would not be flowing in the Santa Cruz River, these species would be affected. So that water is actually valuable to the county. And the USGS and others have studied this issue of the value of water. And a particular study that came out in a journal, the study's name is Framing Scenarios of Binaural Water Policy with a Tool to Visualize, Quantify, and Value changes in Ecosystem Services. In this study, they actually calculated the value of that water. And what they estimated is that that water had a value of about $2.1 million per year. And that excludes real estate values, which benefit from that green corridor that we can all see as we're driving from Nogales to Tucson. We can see that green corridor. So in addition to the pure value of that water, there's also real estate value that's excluded for that particular calculation. Folks have also studied, well, what's the willingness of people to pay for those ecosystem services or to have that water? So this is not a study that I did. This is a study that was published in a particular scientific journal. And what they found is that southern Arizona residents, now there's a star by it because they surveyed metro Phoenix and Tucson residents, as well as residents this far south. So it's not purely southern Arizona. But they'd be willing to pay about $72 per household per year, right? So about $72 per household per year for those ecosystem services. Now, that amounts to, if you do the math, if you estimate in Santa Cruz County that there's about 15,000 households, that amounts to about $1 million or so, which is about half as much as what the value of the water is. So what that boils down to is a couple of cups of coffee per month per household in the county. Now, I always get the question, is that Starbucks coffee or is that Circle K coffee, right? And the answer is that it's somewhere in between. It's about, in this calculation, it's about $2.58 per cup of coffee. Now, why are we talking about the value of the water as delivered by the IOI through the treatment plant into the Santa Cruz River? Well, the reason is, is because we are in a lawsuit with the IBWC, so I'm going to just point us here to 2012. ADEQ filed a lawsuit with the International Boundary Water Commission for Clean Water Act Permit Violations. Now, our lawsuit's really only about permit violations and the Clean Water Act. But what I learned, because I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer, what I learned during this process is that even though your lawsuit is about violations of law, when you get into settlement discussions, you can actually talk about other things, too. And so right now, we're in settlement discussions with the International Boundary Water Commission, and so we're talking about lots of things with them. And one of the things that I want to make sure is that the state of Arizona doesn't settle with the IBWC without sufficient input from local communities. So part of the reason why I'm doing this presentation in so many venues is because I want to hear from local communities. I want to hear whether or not we want to settle or just continue the process in court. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And if we do settle, I want to talk about what that might look like. This slide is very interesting, because although we sued in 2012, there is a long history to the International Outfall Interceptor. One of the things that I point out frequently in all of my presentations is that, one of the things we can see is that in 1951, when the original Nogales International Water Treatment Plant was built, the population of Nogales was about 6,000 people. Population of Santa Cruz County was about 9,000 people, and the population of Nogales-Sonora was 26,000 people. When we fast forward to 2018, the population of Nogales, Arizona, is about 20,000 people, so it's grown by about three times. The population in the county has grown by about five times, but the population in Nogales-Sonora has grown by almost 10 times. And so the growth across the border has been much greater than the growth on this side of the border. And what that means is that various agreements that were had and held between Nogales and the International Boundary Water Commission, it was a very different setting in 1951 and in 1972 than it is today in 2018. And I frankly believe that those factors need to be taken into account. So why are we in settlement discussions with IBWC? Well, again, our lawsuit was about Clean Water Act violations, but I like to point to this picture because it shows a catastrophic failure in the International Outfall Interceptor in 2017. About 600,000 gallons of water per day for six or seven days of raw sewage actually made it into the wash and then into the Santa Cruz River. During this time, E. coli was a very big problem, and they detected E. coli all the way up to Amado. And so the IOI has very old infrastructure. It's past its service life, and it's in desperate need of repair. There are other areas of the IOI that are threatened and at risk. These are just two areas that we can talk about and show where the pipe's exposed and unprotected. There's also a current threat at Manhole 86, I believe, where there's debris that if a large flood carries that debris, it could hit the pipe and the manhole, create another catastrophic event. So ever since I became Director of ADEQ back in 2015, I've been aware of this IOI issue. Now, it wasn't my decision to issue the lawsuit. My predecessor did that. But I've been aware of the issue, and now we're in settlement discussions. But as I've been aware of the issue of the IOI, one of the common questions, the easy question that comes up is, well, can we get Mexico to help, right? Most of the sewage that is treated in the Nogales International Water Treatment Plant comes from Mexico, so can we, can we ask for their help, right? And so I did. I talked with my counterparts. As part of the Arizona-Mexico Commission, I'm able to have discussions with my counterparts in Sonora, and I started talking to them about the age of the infrastructure and the necessity of repairs. So I was talking to the Ejecutivo Vocal of the Comisión Estatal de Aguas. His name is Sergio Avila. Mr. Avila is a very nice man, and I started talking to him about this issue. And he looks at me impatiently, really, and he said, "Misael, what happens if we stop sending that water? Let's say we build our own treatment plant, and we keep all of that water in Mexico. What happens?" And I said, "Well, Sergio, the Santa Cruz River would dry up in lots of areas." And he looked at me, and he smiled, and he said, "Aha." Right? So here's what he's referring to. So international treaties between the U.S. and Mexico, as documented in Minute 276, which deals with these flows, plainly say that Mexico reserves the right to dispose of part or all of the Nogales-Sonora sewage in its own territory or return it for reuse. So here's what that means. The translation of that is that there is no permanence to that water. So remember, that's 38 percent of sustainable yield for groundwater supplies in Santa Cruz County, right? And so there's no permanence currently for that water. Now, a couple of things, some realities to talk about. The municipality of Nogales-Sonora, el municipio de Nogales-Sonora, really doesn't have the wherewithal to build their own treatment systems. They don't have the financial backing to build the infrastructure required to keep all of those flows and reuse them or dispose of them in Mexico. That's just the reality. Everybody accepts that. Now, Conagua does have, so Conagua is the Water Resources Federal Agency in Mexico, and they do have a strategic plan to keep more of their water all across the border. But again, even the Mexican federal government doesn't have a lot of wherewithal for all of those infrastructure projects, and so I don't think that that risk is actually very high. One risk that I do see, though, is that Grupo Mexico recently purchased the El Pilar Mine. And the El Pilar Mine is to the south and east of ambos Nogales. Now, the El Pilar Mine has been around for a long time, but the purchase of that mine by Grupo Mexico is relatively recent. And mines are typically very, very thirsty. They're thirsty industries. And Grupo Mexico is investing billions of dollars into that mine for production. And what we know is that they're currently permitted by Conagua for about 2,700 acre-feet per year of groundwater withdrawal in that area. And most hydrologists tell me that that area can't sustain 2,700 acre-feet. And so there is rumors that El Pilar is having conversations with the Municipio of Nogales about potentially figuring out some way to get more water. Now, those are rumors. I can attest to them. But what I do know, having worked in Arizona almost my entire career, is that mines are thirsty projects. What I also know is that Grupo Mexico is not just the largest company in Mexico. They're one of the largest companies in the entire world. What I also know is that they have lots of resources. And if anybody could do a gargantuan project like that of treating water in Nogales, Mexico, and then piping it back all the way to a mine, it would be somebody like Grupo Mexico. So we're in settlement discussions with IBWC, and it's important that I share this with you, is that I do not want to settle with IBWC if local communities prefer that we just follow the court process. So we'll go into that a little bit later. But here's what IBWC is offering. They're offering $21 million of initial funding for repairs of the IOI. And the project that they already have designed, the project that's ready to go, is a cure-in-place pipe project, where they would put in a flexible mesh and resin inside of the IOI. They would then pressurize it and then heat it up, curing it in place. This technology is technology that Pima County uses now almost exclusively. I happen to speak to one of their engineers at a recent meeting that I attended, and he says that Pima County swears by this technology. It works. It's very cost-effective. And so that's the project that they have 100 percent design plans with and $21 million to start. They're also putting on the table good faith efforts to get the rest of the funding. In other words, that's not all of the funding that they need for this project. They're estimating that the project will cost somewhere between $38 and $48 million to complete for the entire nine-mile stretch of the IOI. And they say that they'll continue operating the Nogales International Water Treatment Plant at 100 percent. So Mexico pays fees, other municipalities, Nogales pays fees, and so they claim that they operate that plant at loss. I have no reason to doubt that, but I have not also reviewed their books. On the bottom here in italics, and remember how I said that in a settlement negotiation, you can bring other stuff that isn't just the subject of the lawsuit? So our lawsuit was Clean Water Act violations and permit violations. But what we noticed is that that would, you know, if local communities and the federal government invest in this project, what I noticed is that there was no permanence to the water. There was no assurance that the water would remain coming to the United States. So we asked them, "Would you be willing to commit to good faith efforts to rewrite Minute 276? Would you be willing to prioritize negotiations with Mexico so that we can keep some of that water and have that in international treaty?" They had told us that they would be willing to include that in a settlement. Now, I had to ask the Director of the Department of Water Resources, so the same gentleman that I'm going to take your comment, Councilmember, about having a local presence for the AMA. I went to him, and I asked him, "Is this a big deal or not?" And he said, "It's absolutely a big deal." Getting IBWC's attention on any local water rights issue and having them prioritize negotiations with Mexico is a very big deal. In fact, Misael, that's half the battle right there, is to get IBWC to be willing to engage in those conversations. Now, those are just good faith efforts. There's no guarantee. But it is a big deal that they'd be willing to entertain that conversation. Now, here's what they were asking for in return. So that's what they wanted from IBWC, and then they have some requests from locals. Now, it's really important that, as far as my conversations with them, they have defined locals as anybody in the state. They have not limited that to the city of Nogales. They have not limited that in any way, shape, or form. In fact, what they've said is that they want a 22 percent match for the repairs, but it's okay if the match comes later, and it's okay if the match comes from other federal sources or any other source. Initially, they were asking for someone locally to take over 100 percent of the IOI ONM. After having several conversations in the local area, I called them back, and I said, "That is a nonstarter. If you're going to require that, might as well go back to court." What I explained to them is that every time I brought this up, people got angry at me, as if I was causing the problems, right? So they came back, and they said that they'd be willing to leave operation and maintenance of the IOI, the pipe itself, outside of the settlement agreement, and it's a 30- or 40-year debate, and so that 30- or 40-year debate would continue. In other words, we don't have to figure that out as part of the settlement agreement. The other thing that they requested is help with easements, rides-away permits, traffic control. One of the things that we've talked to them about, we've not reached any conclusion with them, is that we put some guardrails on what ONM is. For example, that if we were to settle on ONM, that ONM not begin until after the repairs were complete. And if we decided to include ONM in the settlement agreement, what we could also do is have them work with us to define ONM as routine ONM versus internationally-caused ONM. The idea being there is that we might be able to bifurcate those two issues so that internationally-caused issues would be treated by IBWC or others, and then regular, routine ONM would be treated by someone north of the border. But again, what they've offered is to exclude ONM from the settlement discussion so that we can build the project.
Mr. Cabrera? Mr. Mayor? Please go ahead.
On your lawsuit there on count nine, number one, where you talk about cure-in-place pipe, there's a last sentence there that says, "Within the three-year time period, the IBWC shall complete the IOI rehabilitation in phases," that they shall complete it. So that means that they're going to be, the financial burden is placed on them to complete the project, and I'm confused. Are you asking, now that we have to put up a matching 21 percent or 22 percent on there?
So is that the judge's finding of facts, sir?
This is the lawsuit that you filed?
Yes.
That was filed on 12/4/17?
Yes. So that's what we were asking for.
So you were asking that they, that financial burden is on them?
That's correct.
How did it come back that now, right now, you're asking the local for 21 percent? How did it come back that now, right now, you're asking the local for 21%?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we asked for everything that we could possibly ask for. And it's rare that in a lawsuit, the plaintiff gets everything that they want. And so, they came back to us with a settlement offer, and that's what we're discussing today.
So, you didn't want to stick with your recommendation here that they be responsible for it? Because that's a big thing for us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it would be great if that were possible. And in fact, that's the choice, that is the risk, that we have to decide. So, let me show you this flow chart right here. So, we can choose to settle, and so, if we settle, there's a yes path, and there's two components to the yes path. And if we choose not to settle, there's another path. So, let me talk about the non-settling path first. So, the non-settling path would mean that we would go to remedy hearings next. Now, there are findings of fact, some of which are favorable. So, the judge already concluded that IBWC is an owner of the IOI.
Okay. Which they have.
They did not find...the judge did not include that they are the owner.
But the first two miles, they said, the judge said that they were the owner, or the first two miles.
Okay. It's a nine-mile pipe.
It's an 8.8, yes, but the judge did say that they were the owner of the first two miles.
Right. And so, if we go to remedy hearings, we'll get a judicial order. That will happen, right? So, in the remedy hearings, we would continue and we would ask that they do everything. That's what we would ask for. That's absolutely what we would ask for because that's what the original lawsuit talked about. Here's the reality of that, is that judgment and satisfaction are not the same thing. So, the rest of those boxes are in a dotted line, and they're in a dotted line on purpose. So, now, we go into, we get the judicial order. Let's say the judicial order is very, very favorable. We don't know what that would say. We would only know what we can ask for. So, do we get satisfaction? Well, it's possible that they then appeal the decision, which is their right to do. And so, nothing happens while the situation is in appeal, right? And so, after whatever that other process is, the question is, is would they still have the funding available, or would they have to go to Congress? Because here's the fact of the matter is, is that a judge cannot order Congress to allocate or appropriate money. A judge cannot do that. A judge can instruct IBWC to do certain things. You shall do X, Y, Z. And what we would do is we would try to make that X, Y, and Z as complete as possible. But what a judge can't do is can't require Congress to appropriate money. And so, I've talked to a lot of folks. I've talked to my leadership. I've talked to a lot of folks, and it's a very real risk that even if we get exactly the judgment that we want, that we don't actually get satisfaction. That's a very real risk to consider. The other piece is that even if we do get satisfaction, it will be on an extended timeframe, right? So, that's exactly why I'm here. And this is exactly why I'm asking the pointed question, because I do not want to settle with IBWC if local communities don't want me to.
Well, the only thing, the only thing I'm kind of interested is in the timeline between the one that the project can get completed, which is working together, and the other one that has the question marks in case if everything goes well through the legal system, what kind of...how far down the road are we looking for the completed project to, you know, to get some satisfaction?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could predict that with certainty...
Then since you can't...
I'd have a different job.
Okay. Right. Okay. So, the other thing that in question then is, is again, if these mines decided to tap into that water source in the time being, where would that leave us?
So, even if El Pilar wanted to take some of that water, they would have a big project to build, so it would take several years.
Well, this could take several years too.
Yes. So, it's taken us...it's taken us six years to get where we are. So, we initiated the lawsuit with IBWC in 2012, and it's taken us six years to get where we are. The other component is that, and I'll talk about this in later slides, is that the money that's already appropriated could actually be lost, and I'll talk about that in some other slides. During this period of time, we could actually lose the money that's already there.
Twenty-one million?
The 21 million? Yes. I'll talk about that in a future slide. Let me just look at this other process. This other process is, if we settle, again, they have 100% plans, we could begin the work almost immediately, doing the first few phases of the work right away. Then we would have to secure more funding and more local match, and then we would complete the project. The other benefit of settling is that we could get good faith efforts from them to amend Minute 276. Now, that's also a dotted line because I don't know, again, it's international treaty. I don't know how certain it is, whether or not that'll actually happen. So, again, I went back to Sergio Avila and asked him. I said, look, if we've got a multimillion-dollar project on north side of the border, could we use that as justification to come back to the table on Minute 276? And would Mexico be, you know, willing to talk about that? Now, the gentleman I'm talking to, he's not a member of SILA, which is the International Boundary Water Commission in Mexico, but he does know that. And he said, yeah, if you're going to spend, you know, tens of millions of dollars improving infrastructure, that's exactly the kind of justification that can bring, you know, SILA to the table to have those discussions. So, on the one path, we don't settle. We pursue our process in court. On the other path, we figure out a way to come up with the 22% match. And by the way, I'll talk a little bit about some other resources that are available. And we begin work protecting the pipe, replacing manholes, doing some real good for that infrastructure. Couple of things to understand is that last year, there was a rescission bill that passed the House and was defeated narrowly in the Senate. A rescission bill is where the federal government goes to all of the executive branch agencies, and they pull all of the money that hasn't been spent. With all of the increasing national debt discussion, I would not be surprised if a bill like this comes up again in future sessions of Congress. But more importantly, IBWC is now contending with a very big problem in San Diego and Coronado, right? So, what's happening is that Tijuana is discharging sewage that's making it into the ocean that's then getting to the beaches in San Diego and Coronado, and they're having to close beaches in that area, right? Now, that's not our problem, right? Well, it's important to understand that there's four naval installations in that area, one of which trains Navy SEALs, one of which has had to cancel Navy SEAL training events because the ocean water was too contaminated for them to do their training, okay? The other thing to keep track of is that California has over 10% of Congress.
So, you're trying to tell us that they're going to take that money and take it over there?
What I'm saying is that IBWC has said is that that money's not going to be there forever. That's what they've said, right? Now, I'm going to go back here, and I want to make something absolutely clear. This path right here is a lot easier for me.
Which one are you, let's see?
The court process is actually a lot easier for me. I want to make that absolutely clear. Because when I have these presentations, I often get this reaction like I'm the bad guy, when I'm just trying to come up with a solution, right? So, this is a lot easier for me. But I don't think that's the right solution for southern Arizona, because this puts us in a lot of uncertainty for a problem that we're having today. Now, what I've learned in my career is that oftentimes, you cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And sometimes, especially in public service, what we have to do, and I do this a lot in my job as director at ADQ, I do whatever good I can today when I can do it. So, there's a lot of ideas that I've been discussing with lots of groups. One idea is a domestic water improvement district. Domestic water improvement district would have the ability of getting WIFSA loans. Those WIFSA loans come with forgivable principal. Other county improvement districts, other special taxing district, nonprofit contributions. I already have $1 million from a private foundation associated with the match. They're willing to put in $1 million over a three-year period. Remember, the federal government said that the match didn't have to come upfront. So, over a three-year period, I have a nonprofit that's willing to give us $1 million for this match. I am also trying to make appointments with the Nature Conservancy. I've spoken to Intel to see if they have dollars, that they'd be willing to contribute for the sake of the Santa Cruz River. Intel told me, well, you don't really fit our model, but keep us informed. So, I'll continue to talk with them. And I'm not done talking with people about this project to try to raise monies for a local match. I've spoken to the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and they said that they have a fund in the Santa Cruz AMA with $200,000 that could be used for this purpose. We're talking to EPA about using other federal grants. There's also the idea about monetizing the water. So, in Arizona law, now, I'm not a water law expert by any means. In fact, I'm not a law expert at all. I'm just an engineer, right? But water law, it's its own unique thing. In Arizona water law, if you treat the water at a wastewater treatment plant, you own the water. Right now, the federal government is not claiming that water. Does that make sense? So, there might be an opportunity to monetize the water somehow and get some benefit from it. And I'm also open to any other idea that's available. I'm also open to not settling at all. In fact, that would be the easiest path for me and my staff. Just let it ride out in court and see what happens. So, here's my request. I would like to know, not today, obviously, but I would like to know what the local community thinks. I would like to know, should we settle or not? I would like to know, should we just take our chances in court? And then, I'd also like to know, who's the point of contact for me for the city of Nogales? I've made this request also at the Port Authority. They said that they'd be having conversations with various stakeholders. So, that's my request. I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Well, the point of contact for the city of Nogales is always the city manager. He's the one who deals on the day-to-day basis of these. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr., I'll just share a couple of my feelings, okay? I think a decision like this, first of all, encompasses that we have position papers from the city manager and the city attorney on our option. We need to hear from them what our options are and what their recommendations are before we make a decision itself. And the other thing is, we have some new people that are coming onto the council next month, and I think that they should be a part of this decision also. $21 million seems a lot of money, and I recognize that. But in the...but if our commitment is that we're going to be responsible for the 8.8 miles in exchange for that, in 2075, when that cure pipe seems to have problems, the mayor and council in 2075 are going to have a very difficult time coming up with money to pay for that pipe. I can make the decision right now, but I gotta look down the line because I don't want in 2075 that council to say, who were the stupids in 2018 that did this? So, there's a lot more to it, and I know it sounds like a lot of money, and I want you to know that right now, I think with the federal judge's ruling, we have a little one step ahead of IBWC. But regardless of that, I want you to know how much this community appreciates all your efforts of coming down here and sharing your thoughts and asking for our opinion, especially that you're a listener. We're very grateful to you for that, Mr. Cavarretta, and I don't want you to leave, no matter what position we take. We appreciate everything that you have done for our community, and it doesn't go unrecognized, okay? I just, I personally have some, don't quite agree with a lot of your presentation, but I have to wait for Dr. Felix and Mr. Pata to make recommendations for us, and then I want to hear the opinion of the newly-elected officials before we make a commitment. And that's all I really, what I have to say right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And that pretty much speaks on behalf of the current administration because, you know, this is a, this is a long-range thing. It's not something we're going to decide in the next couple of months. So, hopefully, things open up or maybe they can speed up the process, but maybe in the, before spring or something, we can, hopefully, that money will still be there. And if not, I'm sure the city will figure a way out, a way of, you know, getting our sewage down to the wastewater treatment plant. I guess we're going to have to be looking also at other avenues and because of all these other, other factors that kind of overhang, you know, on these decisions. So, again, it's something like Councilor Maguana said, we have to get more input from our city manager, from the team that's been representing Nogales, and also get the feedback from the rest of the surrounding community. We definitely want to work with everyone. So, thank you, because that's what you're doing, and that means you're giving us good avenues that maybe we can get some real good progress in those areas. So, thanks again for doing this.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, please. Mr. Cavarretta, is there like a timeframe or a speed of the essence type thing here? Or, because, you know, we don't need, we need to be well-informed as far as time limits and time constraints are concerned, so, to make a decision here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, initially, IBWC had given us a deadline this summer, and that deadline came and went. And what the Department of Justice did is they went to the Office of Management and Budget, and they said, hey, can you make sure that these monies don't get re-appropriated come the new federal fiscal year? And they did that. So, while they want us to go fast, there's not an impending deadline. There's just potential for congressional rescission bills or potential for some sort of re-allocation. What I can tell folks is that I'm glad you recognize how hard I've been working on this because I have been working very hard on this issue because I care about this community and I care about clean water in our rivers. I became an environmental professional, gosh, I'm forgetting, over 25 years ago because I really cared about clean water and a clean environment. What I would say is that I cannot continue to provide this amount of effort for very much longer. It's a very large state with lots and lots of problems. And so, originally, I had my deputy director, Brett Parks, leading the way on this. Deputy Director Parks is now... Deputy Director Parks has now left ADQ to get a higher-paying job at another state agency. And so, I had given myself a sort of a deadline of, if I can't figure out a consensus solution by early next year, then I might just take the Attorney General's Office recommendation. So, the Attorney General's Office, you should know, and they're helping us with this lawsuit. They're leading it, of course. Their recommendation is, go to court, just finish the process in court. They feel that we got a good chance, and that's their preference. Everyone else that I talked to reminds me about this issue of judicial orders when it comes to congressional appropriation aren't as valuable as I might think they are otherwise, because it's a separation of powers issue, right? So, Congress allocates budget, right? Judges decide on matters of law. And a lot of that's beyond my scope, because again, I'm an engineer, not an attorney, but I have told myself that I can't continue to come down, you know, twice a month, you know, and working with all of this stuff for an extended period of time, because it would just be irresponsible to the rest of my duties. So, there's no hard deadline, but I would like to know by early next year which path we're gonna go, cause right now, what we are, we're just in an indecision timeframe, and I'm the type of person who likes to pick a path. But, that deadline's artificial, it's not hard and fast.
And the definition of early next year, if you find that's...
If I don't see any progress being made at all, and I mean on any front, so, remember, I'm still continuing to talk to nonprofits, right? I've got a million dollars in the bank already. It's not in the bank, but I've got a firm commitment from a foundation that over a three-year period, they'll give me a total of a million dollars, and that's firm. I'm gonna continue that effort. And so, if I start seeing progress on that end, but there's no local consensus, I can be patient. But if I'm not making progress as a fundraiser, which by the way, I never thought that that was part of my role, but that's what I'm doing, right? If I'm not making more progress on fundraising for the local match, and I'm not making progress in terms of local consensus as to what to do, then it would be early in the year, January or February. If I'm making some progress, then I would, you know, extend that further, because if we're making progress, we're making progress, but if we're not, we're not.
Well, with Mr. Cavarera, so we don't miss a deadline, Dr. Felix, I think that you should develop a position paper for the mayor and council in January, and have a timeline so we can give Mr. Cavarera an answer of what our decision is, okay? I don't want him to make a decision, nor the Attorney General's Office to make a decision, because we can't make a decision, okay? We don't, that's not good, and it doesn't look good on our community. So, we've gotta be responsible though too and make a decision. So, January, February, I think by March or so, we could give you a decision, okay? And we leave it, I leave it up to you to take it from there, Dr. Felix. Keep us organized.
I just want more questions here.
Mr. Cavarera, on leaving the O&M, is that negotiable, do you think, as far as have them even after completing their work, where they could, would continue to manage it?
So, what they've, what they've told us is they're willing to exclude the debate about the O&M. So, as far as I know, and Mr. Parra understands this history better than I do, is the debate about who's supposed to manage O&M has been going on for decades and decades. And so, what they're willing to do, if we want, is exclude that issue from the settlement. In other words, because it's such a contentious issue, just exclude it, and the debate would just continue. The same debate we've had for 30 years, we would continue the debate. What I think is a better solution, and they haven't accepted this, is that we define O&M in a fair way as to what local communities can be responsible for and what local communities should not be responsible for. And I think that's been part of the problem, is that IBWC has ignored international issues that then affect the local community, and then required or expected the local community to deal with it all. One thing that I wanna make clear is that, when I say local community, I don't mean just Nogales, Arizona. I'm talking about the entire county that benefits from the water, and I've actually asked the Department of Water Resources, is the Tucson groundwater basin benefiting from recharging the Santa Cruz? Cause if they're benefiting, I'm gonna go have the same conversation with them too. So, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get anyone who benefits from the water to be part of the conversation. But on the O&M piece, what they're willing to do is they're willing to either exclude it entirely, so that it's not part of the settlement, it just is the continuing debate that's been had for over 30 years. But, for them, percentage is more important than who. That's what I've noticed in the communications. So, for them, percentage is more important than who.
What about the resealing company, or people that would do the resealing, do the inner tube and all that? Do they have a warranty, or, you know, maintain it for 25 years, 10 years after it is concluded?
So, I don't think that that's currently part of the plans and specs. The life of that cure-in-place piping system is at least 20 years. That's the life of it, and I think it's actually more than that. But I do not think that they currently have in their plans and specs, O&M. Now, obviously, if it's a construction error or a design error, that would be something that could be addressed, but I don't think their plans and specs currently include that. I think it just includes the construction and more of a standard warranty associated with construction.
I have a question on, it's kind of indirect, but yet it affects the material and stages of the river, and since you mentioned the mines like El Pilar, and then we also have the Amosa Project on this side, close to the Santa Cruz River, do those mining operations affect the Santa Cruz River in a negative way at all? Is there any contamination, is there anything that might come to the river itself, on those mines?
I'm not aware of any.
I was asking your environmentalist, pardon.
I'm not aware of any, but what I, the El Pilar mine, though, it's important to understand, it's, if we look at it, it's, I lost my pointer. So, the Santa Cruz River starts in Arizona, in the US, comes down, loops down, and then comes back up. The El Pilar mine is right there. So, in fact, it's really, really close to the river. I would say that's a risk, but I'm not aware of any current issues. I know there's been issues in the past, but I'm not aware of any current issue.
That's, yeah, that's pretty close. Yes, Councilman.
One quick question here. You're saying that once they refit it and do the sock in it and all that, it's good for about 20 years, more or less?
At least.
25, maybe? 30, if we push it? So, at the end of that, of that time, when that is gone, it has to be completely taken out and redone again, or can it be refitted again, or who's gonna, you know, what I'm saying is, who's gonna have the problem in 25 more years?
So, I wanna distinguish between what us engineers call design life and then actual life, right? So, when we're designing something, we usually give it a life based on a whole bunch of factors of safety and stuff like that. So, typically, when you design a bridge, a road, water, wastewater infrastructure, the typical design life is somewhere around 20, 25 years. Actual life is actually very different. Like, if, if actual life were literally 20 years, then three-quarters of the infrastructure everywhere would be falling apart. So, the IOI pipeline, was it 1972 when the, when the 8.8 mile line was installed? Here, I got it. I know when.
1972.
1972, so, 1972, that's 28 years plus 18, what's that, 46? So, that pipe is 46 years old today, and it's still working, but it's breaking, right? So, so that's the difference between actual life and design life. Design life actually should include performance without catastrophic breaks, like what we've had in the IOI.
So, so once that, say it's 40 years, 45 years, whatever, then it, what I'm trying to get at is, will that have to be, that IOI taken completely out, thrown away, and put in a new one in 40 years, 50 years?
Maybe soon.
Maybe soon, whatever. Or can it be re-socked?
So, I actually don't know the answer to the question of, can you do a second cure-in-place pipe? I don't know the answer to that question. I'll write it down, try to get that information, and I'll submit it to the mayor and council.
Along those lines, can you also ask, if it can, how much will it narrow the passage rate? Cause now you're putting another layer on top of another layer, which narrows down the dimension of, you know, flow.
So, can you do cure-in-place inside of cure-in-place, and then how much will it narrow? From my understanding, the thickness of the cure-in-place solution is somewhere between an eighth and a quarter of an inch, so it's not very thick, but it's made of specialized resins, so it's actually as competent as the original concrete. Now, when IBWC first promoted this, I'm not a wastewater engineer, I was a little skeptical about that, but after speaking with the Pima County engineer, he swore by it. He says the technology works. The other thing is that we don't know what technology's gonna be like 20 years from now. There may be solutions available to us that we don't know in the today.
That's true. And just a comment, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Cavarera, you know, I've been dealing with this IOI issue since I was on the council in 1980, and in 1980, we had to collect the share from Mexico, their share for the flow. It was our responsibility to collect it, and we had to pay IBWC. And when they didn't pay us, we had to take it out of our own funds to pay. And it was Congressman Moya that passed legislation, where now IBWC came in to collect the funds from the individual cities. So, we've been dealing this a long time, and just as frustrated as you are, the two.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to help, sir. That's all I'm trying to do.
No, I understand that.
Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor. And I know I got here a little late, so I don't know if Dr. Felix or whether our city attorney, Mr. Parra, gave an opinion, and I know that Councilman Barona requested a, I guess, a much more solid position with the position paper in March. But what path do you recommend at this moment, at this time, considering the presentation that Mr. Cavarera gave for the council? Dr. Felix?
Mayor, Councilman Baroas, we are both legal, and Mr. Kissinger and I are working on a thorough evaluation of where, what recommendations we put forth to the city council. So, we're putting a lot of data together, going back historically, making sure that we don't make any mistakes and promise more that we can take on, so that we're not at the point right now to offer a position, but we'll be working closely with Mr. Cavarera in his office, and hopefully, IBWC will come to the table and be a partner in coming up with a fair, equitable solution. The state legislature is working with us as well, Senator representative. Senator DeLisandro's is here, she's been very proactive in helping us, and so we're also approaching Congress to make sure that any federal dollars that could be put on the table are there. So, it's a complex scenario we're working with, and I'm sure that by, hopefully by March, we can have a solid position that we could bring to the council for consideration, hopefully before March. That's our goal.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Cavarera. Oh, there he is, I was looking for you a little earlier. Yes, Senator?
May I, if you may, please, may I speak for just a few minutes?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm State Senator Andrea DeLisandro. I represent all of Santa Cruz County in part of Pima County, and I would just like to let you know that Director Cabrera, when the breach happened in August of 2017, he was on the phone with me for two hours. So, he does, he does care about this community. I'm the current ranking member of Senate Natural Resources, Energy, and Water, and I would like to let you know that the entire legislature in Arizona and Phoenix has been briefed on this issue, so I got to give them a little geography lesson, and we did pass Senate Concurrent Memorial 1012, thanks to Sherry Sasse, who's in the audience, bringing it to me over a year ago, and it was one of the rare times in Arizona that both sides of the aisle agreed on, and there was not one negative vote. It was to urge Congress to pass the Nogales Wastewater Finess Act, which has two parts. One is that Nogales of Arizona would be proportionally responsible only for the wastewater that they generate, and the other part deals with maintenance and operation of the IOI. So, when I often meet with the Senator's staff, the US Senator's staff, and the Congress people, most of them come to a lot of meetings I go to, whether it's for Davis-Montham Air Force Base or other things, I have one song, and it's to urge Congress to support this issue. I personally live in Sawarita, and all of our water comes from groundwater, which was brought up near the end of the conversation, because the river doesn't stop at the county line, it continues on. So, you know, I speak to the mayor of Sawarita, we also are talking to Tucson and to Pima County and to other people along, cause it really is a regional, a regional issue. And it was, it's funny, some of you may remember Senator Gail Griffin, now Representative-elect Gail Griffin, she has an issue in Naco with water coming across the border, so it's the only time in my six years in the Arizona Legislature that there was a friendly amendment. Usually, they're considered hostile, so we work together, and she's involved with this also. What our goal is, and Green Valley, like Santa Cruz Citizens Council, you know, they're not, they're not incorporated, so we're also working with them for more collaboration, more organization, more business leaders, because it does have a regional effect. And when we were at the Arizona-Mexico Commission, many, many of you were there, Kirk Adams, the Governor's Chief of Staff, was there, so I wrote a letter to him. And the whole, the whole goal of the whole thing is to get more support, that when a congressional delegation goes to Washington, DC, that they have a lot of people to back them up, you know, to hold on to the money that has been appropriated already, and to make it more attention from the Army Corps of Engineers. So, I thank you for being here in my legislative district, and I look forward to continue to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you so much for that update. Yes, Mr. Longley? Yes, Mr. Lomelie, you have?
Sure, please. My name is Ben Lomelie. I'm a hydrologist, consulting hydrologist, retired hydrologist from Department of the Interior, recently retired. And I know most of you, most of you know me, so I think that's probably all I need to say about myself. But I want to continue the conversation on the IOI. But before that, I want to thank Mr. Gavetta. He's done a lot for our community. He helped a lot with the Border Patrol shooting range issue. So I believe he does care. I believe he's the messenger. We should not be taking shots at him and so I'm glad we haven't. Also want to thank the city council here for your astute questioning and a very informed line of questioning. I want to talk a little bit about cure in place. Cure in place is a technology that works really well. It works really well under the streets. We did cure in place here in Nogales. I was part of that with Collins Peña Engineering. We cured in place Morley Avenue, Arroyo Avenue and several other of the side streets. Still holding up pretty good. The stuff works great where it's not in the wash. Pipelines work great when they're not in the wash. Sure, Pima County uses cure in place below scour line, where the, where the wash isn't going to mess with it. But here, we have part of the IOI underneath the streets and it's leaking sewage, raw sewage 24/7 into our drinking water aquifers. Do we want to cure and place that? Absolutely, as soon as possible. We want to address our highest priorities as our, I mean, our highest risk as our highest priorities. We know of places where this thing's going to rupture sooner or later where it's in the wash. But we know of places where it's under the streets. We can cure those right away and stop the leakage of raw sewage into our drinking water aquifer as soon as possible. That's definitely a high priority for us. Another high priority for us is where it's in the wash and it's exposed and it can rupture with any flows. It doesn't have to be a huge flood. A long-lasting flood of lesser duration can undermine and scour and do the same thing it did with Manhole 89. Manhole 89 didn't fail because it was overtop. It failed because it was undermined and it couldn't hold its own weight up. The cure in place lining is not going to help with that. It's very thin. It's not going to be as structurally sound as the pipeline is now or what it was in the beginning. Now, the life of the pipeline, 20 years, maybe, but there's a factor that hasn't been spoken to and that's sediment. As Nogales Sonora has grown, that watershed has become more impurgus due to pavements, rooftops, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. So peak flows have increased. They don't have retention, detention, development requirements over there, so everything runs off. With peak flows increasing, sediment flows increase. And sediment goes through that pipe and has worn out. The inward, the inside bottom of that pipe is worn out and leaking. And so the lifetime of the pipe, cure in place pipe, is questionable with continued sediment flows through it. So I'm really glad to hear that hopefully we can keep the ONM out of the settlement because we don't have the resources as a community with the municipality of Nogales, with Santa Cruz County as a whole, to deal with these ruptures. And you're guaranteed ruptures as long as this thing is in the wash. Back protection is Band-Aid solutions in a natural wash that naturally wants to meander and to line that whole thing, we're tucking even more money than building a new pipe. So we need to continue to look for solutions that we work with together. We need to expand our support base downstream because those people are affected. Ecoli, elevated Ecoli counts were all the way down to San Javier. So it's not just our county line at Amado that's affected. The recharge, sure, we benefit from that, but it's not guaranteed to continue because Mexico could expand Los Alisos and pump it the other way. The mine could take it and we got climate change on top of that. And so it's not a guaranteed benefit to us. What is guaranteed to us is continued ruptures if that thing is left in the wash. Sooner or later, it's going to rupture again. We don't have the resources to deal with that. As owners of that IOI, we need to make sure that this international Outfall Interceptor remains with the International Boundary and Water Commission. We're not saying it's got to come out of their budget. We're not asking for a perfect solution. We're asking for a fair and sustainable solution that is not on the backs of the local people who can't handle this. We just can't handle it. Furthermore, if we were the owners of the IOI, who is IBW, who is ADQ going to sue next time it ruptures? I'll leave you with those thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lomelie. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And in all fairness, because I know I put Dr. Felix in and Mr. Parra in a, in a situation there. But, you know, just to give you my opinion, just so that you know where, where I'm coming from, at least my opinion, and, and I agree with Mr. Lomelie, you know, we have to start moving. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Gavetta, I would tend to, to settle and get going. And that 21 million is a lot of money for us to, to lose. At least at this point, that's how I'm thinking. I know that maybe with more research and from the recommendation that legal and our city manager make, you know, I'll change my mind. But at this moment, that's, that's where I would go and it would be to settle. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
And I appreciate all the work that you're doing as well, Mr. Governor.
If I may address from a legal standpoint, just the statement made by Councilman Rojas, the city of Nogales is no longer in this lawsuit. I just want to make sure that mayor and council and the public in Nogales are aware of this. City of Nogales is no longer in this lawsuit. We, we're out of it. This is ADQ's lawsuit against the International Boundary Water Commission. The city of Nogales would be doing is recommending to ADQ what to do in this lawsuit. Okay? And I just, I just want to make sure that the public knows this. But our recommendation, obviously, is, is being sought out and, and that's appreciated, of course. And, and at the end of the day, from, from the legal standpoint, again, in, in working with our city manager, with the city manager, we'll make a recommendation, the legal team that is working on this issue will make a recommendation as to, as to the, the issues that could be present if, if a judgment is obtained by ADQ. Because again, as Engineer Gavetta has mentioned, one thing, and he's looking at it from an engineer's standpoint, not an attorney's standpoint, but one thing is to have a judgment and another thing is to collect on that judgment.
Right.
And everyone and anyone knows that. So that's, that is really where perhaps the, the legal team needs to offer up its, its advice to mayor and council. And we plan on doing that through the city manager's office in executive session at the beginning of the year or when a mayor and council are prepared to, to hear us out.
Thank you, Mr. Parra, Mayor. Yes, and I, and I believe that one of the things that Mr. Gavetta wants to see, and I'm sure it looks a whole lot better if there's consensus, if we have the, the mayor and the council backing, backing the plan or the path. Is that correct, Mr. Governor?
I just want to make sure that the state is not making decisions that affect local communities without full and robust local community gamble.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Governor. And thank you, Mr. Governor.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're pretty much done with, with this presentation and we're, we're off to the next.
Thank you, Mr. Gavetta.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight, Mayor and Council. My name's Jim Townsend with Wilson and Company. I've been here before, have presented the bike and pet master plan to you in the past. Just wanted to give you a quick update. The study overall is funded through ADOT, completely funded through ADOT, through a grant secured by WAN. We started in February and we should finish up in February as well of 2019. We are at the tail end of the schedule. We're holding the second public meeting in about a half an hour over at the Public Works We had a public meeting back in May where we had about 50 people show and it was very well-attended, given a couple council updates and again, the public meeting tonight. We've also done a number of surveys where we got community responses that say, there's a lot of activity for both walking and biking in the community. They identified a lot of needs from their perspective on, on where the focus should be in the community. Through the effort, we developed a inventory of where your sidewalks are. Those are all the purple lines on the map. All it is is an inventory. It's not a condition assessment. That's something that should be done sometime in the future. On the bike side of things, you do have a full range of abilities out there, cyclist abilities, and they, they want or require different types of treatments in order to make them feel comfortable out on the road. Somebody riding on Mariposa, for example, is very, very comfortable. And somebody riding on Hoakum is, doesn't have to be very comfortable riding with traffic. And so we took these considerations in our recommendations that you'll see here in a minute relating to the criteria, relating to traffic, the traffic controls, signals and so on, the speeds, the width of the roadway as it sits today, the number of lanes that are out there, number of driveways. We tried to make the most of what your system is today so that you don't have to do a lot of construction activity to develop a full bicycle network on the system throughout the community. So this network, this proposed network has a number of roads that are share the road, that are riding on the shoulder, that are dedicated bike lanes, a couple buffered bike lanes and a multi-use path. And this system of roads allows you to, allows your community to access a lot of the key locations in the community that people are trying to get to, different parks, schools, shopping, so on. And when we reached out to the community, the, what they wanted were pretty much the same areas that we, we identified. So there's a lot of consistency in what we saw technically versus what the community sees and feels with their riding today. The report that you will see in February, that will, will be presented to you in February, identifies a lot of low-cost treatments. It's paint, it's signage, and then some, we'll say fundamental items on the, on the, on the sidewalk side of things, like taking care of ADA-related issues. The moderate cost items, paving shoulders, adding a trail on the side of the road outside of the curb, taking care of rail crossings, making them more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, some sidewalk replacement and identification of new sidewalk locations around key corridors, related to key corridors that we, we studied as part of this project. There's an element of supporting infrastructure too. You do have a bike repair station out in the community now. Something that is related to this is having ample bike parking in the community so that when people are riding their bike, they have somewhere to park it. So it's just not leaning up somewhere and tied to a pole or what, you know. It's, it's just, it's much more organized, safe and they're not blocking sidewalks when they shouldn't be blocking sidewalks and so on. On the pedestrian side of things, you know, there's, there's a lot of needs out there, whether it's the, where sidewalks meet driveways, the sidewalks themselves, steepness of grades when, when, when there's a ditch or even, you know, you have a lot of places where there's super wide driveways and the sidewalk disappears. And so it makes it, it turns it into a more unsafe condition for anybody walking that's, that really has to walk or wants to walk. And the other thing we're looking at is Royal Road. That was a corridor that, where people are using that corridor to get to some public space at the end of the road. And there's a trail system back there. So we've, we've identified some select areas that our shoulder could be improved without a lot of impact to the, to the property owners. We don't have a good feel for property boundaries. We just know that there's about 60 feet of rideaway through there. We looked at existing constraints where there's guardrail and so on and tried to keep that at a cost so that it's not overwhelming to do something on that corridor. You know, maintenance and implementation, you know, that's a, a big element of this. You know, keeping up the paint, keeping up, taking care of your roads and, you know, the timing of, of striping really needs to coincide with when you seal up a road or when you, when you rejuvenate a road. You know, this photo on the left is a good example of when you just cover up striping. You know, think of, over time, your striping kind of erodes away. Cars are driving on it, you know, it just gets old. And then it just gets confusing to the people out there. So doing it right when the opportunity is there is critical. Next steps for this study, you know, we're, we're going to compile feedback from the open house tonight. We met with the technical advisory committee before coming here and so really it's just wrapping up the draft report and getting that reviewed. Next steps for you as a city, in February, after the final report is developed, it's going through the adoption process through resolution. I know, you know, you have new council members coming on board, but that's, that's something that's really important. It gives you something to lean on as a city as development occurs and gets everybody on the same page in terms of direction that you want to take. You know, each of the corridors that we looked at, further design needs to occur. The, you know, what we, this is a planning study. The next step is actually engineering so that the striping is done in, and developed in a plan set, stamped and implemented by a contractor. today, and make more of what's out there, and just reallocate that space. And with that, we're going to open up for any questions we have, try to be really efficient.
No, the one that, I guess it was page 32 of the packet, and you have that one on the loop, when you go into Meadow Hills, and you kind of come into that frontage road coming south again, that ends right before turning right to a Coronado Elementary School, right there, the blue, the blue. Actually, it's the blue, that one has the blue, I think. Yeah, that one doesn't loop all the way, it just goes around in a circle. The pink over there, from Meadow Hills, yeah. But on the other, on the other slide or picture you have, it shows that part connecting.
Yeah, there's a disconnect between...
Yeah, it's a small, actually, it's a small area.
Yeah.
Probably half a mile, no, about three-quarters of a mile, probably, that would connect to that road.
Yeah, it's a huge opportunity that, you know...
That would really help.
That would help, and then there's a connection over here by Vaper over to Royal, that would help as well.
Right. That would really make, you know, for the enjoyment of our bicycle riders and everything, they could really tour the city and loop around it. And how feasible and possible is that?
Are the two loops?
Is it included?
The plan will include those.
Okay, good.
Yeah, as things for the city to consider, you know, it's private property right now. So as those opportunities come up for you, this allows you to say, hey, there's, this was identified in the plan that we adopted as a city, and, you know, this is important to us.
Great, okay. I just wanted to see how far we've been with that. Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Police and fire are ready to go on the December meeting because of the shortness of time and the importance of the presentations that we're going to give, we respectfully asked if we could just move those two items to our December meeting so they can do their presentation.
If it's okay with you, it's okay with us.
Well, the only thing is, I think we should because of that, but just remember, Dr. Felix, that we put these two, because this is the second time we postponed this.
We'll put them first up in December.
Okay, all right. Fine, Mayor.
Would that be okay?
I guess, no other comment from the council, everybody okay with it?
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, at this, at this moment, at this time, I call this meeting a session, special session meeting.